Hello. My name is Brian O'Connor. I am the Chairman of the Stratford Planning Commission. Today is December 20th, 2022. It is now 6:00 PM. I call this meeting to order. The Stratford Planning Commission is now open for a public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard at this session. Regular members present at this meeting are Mr. Aurelia, Ms. Graham, Mr. Boyd, Mr. Vacola. I'd also like to welcome Smita Atara, Town Planner, Aileen Marsh, Recording Secretary. We also are joined by the Town Attorney Pat Sullivan and Senator Kevin Kelly. Before calling this first petition, I'd like to inform those of you who have never appeared before us, that is, the policy of this commission to have questions of the petitioner directed through the Chairman. The Chairman reserves the right to rule on cross-examination for the purpose of clarification of technical questions. I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more than the time anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and be continued to another date which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, in accordance to the state statutes, tonight's petition has advertised on the Town Planning and Zoning webpage in the Town Clerk's Office, was also advertised at the Connecticut Post on December 7th and December 14th. I will now advise the Town Planner to read the first petition.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a petition of JR B. Holding Co., LLC for 795 James Farm Road Properties, seeking a four-lot subdivision with lot sizes ranging from 40,095 square feet to 550,775 square feet in a residential, single-family zone. And...
Thank you. I will now ask the petitioner to announce your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Attorney Stephen Bellis. I'm with the Pellegrino Law Firm. I live in Shelton. I work in New Haven, and I represent the applicant JR B. Holding.
And ask the petitioner to submit their certificates of mailing to the abutters, please.
I have a whole package. Should I just do it all at once?
Yeah, please.
Okay. For the record, I have... I'll hand it to you. And I've given it to Jay Habansky. I have my letter to the abutters, the mailing address. I have the letter from the Wetlands Commission, which says that there's no wetlands on the property, that they have jurisdiction over. I have the planner's recommendations to your board, and I made a smaller copy of the map you're going to see. And lastly, the settlement agreement, which I'll go over. And I'll break that down for you in a minute. In the back.
There you go. All right. Now invite you to make your presentation, please.
Oh, thank you, sir. So let me give you a little bit of background. I've represented a couple of entities that have brought several lawsuits against the town of Stratford concerning properties in town over the years. So Attorney Kevin Kelly, who's over there, and I negotiated a settlement of all these matters, and there's about, I'll just say approximately, a dozen. And as part of that settlement, we entered into a settlement agreement with the town of Stratford that the mayor has agreed to and signed. I'm just going to give you a portion of the settlement agreement. I'm not going to give you the whole document. So as part of that settlement agreement, we have to go to different commissions and get their approvals. We've had to go to wetlands commissions. We've had to go to the zoning commission. And finally, last not but least, we're coming to your planning commission. So as part of that settlement, there's a piece of property known as 795 James Farm Road. And that piece is a rather large parcel that, let's call it, about 15 acres, okay? Next month, I'm going to come back before your commission with a second parcel known as Peters Lane, and that's about 10 acres. And as part of this settlement agreement, we are asking your commission to approve a three-lot subdivision on James Farm Road and a three-lot subdivision on Peters Lane. But tonight, I am only going to be discussing 795 James Farm Road, okay? So the first thing we did is we went to the Wetlands Commission on 795 James Farm Road. They took a look at the application. We had experts show where the wetlands were. We had a soil scientist present his findings, and I've given you in that package that I first handed over, a report from Kelly from the wetlands, saying that there's no impact, there's no regulated activity, so you don't have to worry about any of the wetlands on this particular property. Now, I have to go to them even though there are no regulated activities, because under our statute, whenever you have a subdivision, you have to go to wetlands, okay? So I did that. So now I'm here before you to present what we call a three-lot subdivision. Now, it says in your package, four lots, and just let me be clear. There's going to be three lots, lots one, two, and three, where there will be houses. So it's a three-home subdivision. The fourth lot is the remaining land behind those homes, and that land is to be deeded as open space to the town of Stratford. That's part of the settlement. So what I'd like to take you through is the three-lot subdivision for the homes, and then that fourth lot is going to get deeded. I have brought with me an expert who's going to go over the plans in detail with you, but I just wanted to say that this particular subdivision meets all your regulations for a subdivision. So I don't need to tell you all that when you're looking at a subdivision application, you act administratively, and if the plans meet your regulations, then there's no discretion as to what to do. The court cases say that the applications are granted. If you have any question that it does not meet your regulations, ask me, ask our expert. You know, we're not trying to hide anything. I just am trying to point out that I believe that it meets the regulations, and so does the expert. But if you have a question, you certainly ask us, okay? So with having said that, let me introduce to you Steve. He's an engineer at Rose and Tizzo in Fairfield, and he's going to take you through a little bit about the particulars of this particular subdivision, okay? And then I'll come back.
Thank you. As Steve Bellis said, my name is Steve Santacross. I work at Rose Tizzo and Company in Fairfield, Connecticut, and I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. So I'm just going to run through the plans and the proposed subdivision. And starting off, we have a subdivision map that was prepared by a professional land surveyor, Phil Tizzo. As Mr. Bellis said, the property is approximately 15 and a half acres, and as he also said, it's a three-lot subdivision. Three of the lots need to be 40,000 square feet in area, which they are or more. The remaining portion of the lot, approximately 12.6 acres, will be deeded to the town of Stratford.
Can you point to that? Is that what's behind... Which square is that that's deeded? Oh, this one. Okay. Oh.
It's...
Where's this? So it's this one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can point it out if you're all set. This sheet is just showing an overall site plan, and also shows the proposed single-family homes that will be on lots one, two, and three. And we're proposing four-bedroom, single-family homes with driveway access to James Farm Also, as you can see, the wetlands are at the rear of the property, and there's 250-foot setback line. As Mr. Bellis said, the project will not be in the upland review area. Here's our larger-scale site plan, just showing the three lots within the larger parcel area, as well as some landscaping. And we're also showing some that we did test pits out here, because the houses will be And turning to the utility plan, we have fully designed septic systems for the four-bedroom houses, as well as stormwater infiltration. The stormwater infiltration will attenuate storm events up to the 25-year storm. Peak flows will be reduced by almost 20% for the five-year storm, 20% for the 10-year storm, and 6% for the 25-year storm event from the existing wooded condition. And then we're going to outlet the stormwater infiltration well past the septic area, and it's going to be well downhill of the proposed development. We've also prepared a soil erosion and sediment control plan. We're showing silt fencing around the development area, as well as construction entrances, and also silt sacks in the proposed trench drain. On SB4, we have our test pit information, as well as perk test results. SB5 has our soil erosion and sediment control notes, as well as a construction, typical construction sequence, and typical erosion control details, such as silt fence barriers, silt sacks, construction entrance. And we also have some typical stormwater details. So I'll turn it over if there's any questions at this time.
Just off the bat, do you have a sheet with the tree details?
You mean landscape, the landscaping, landscaping? We have a landscaping plant list. Tried to use typical native trees, and so we're just showing that on our site and landscape plan.
So your intention would... You're going to be planting trees, native trees, for the landscape, correct?
Correct. Yep. Native trees and also bushes along the proposed house.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I see on the plant list, is this what you're saying, Juniper Commons? Is this the plants you're using?
Correct.
That's in there, right there?
Yep.
Okay. I believe William Boyd's Zone 2, District 2. One question. It's septic. It said, "Is the power lines underground or power lines above ground on this one?"
The houses are proposed to be fed from overhead electric. There's utility poles along James Farm Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Do any of the other commissioners have any questions?
Yeah, Paul Aurelia. I noticed that on the property, there was... I drove by the other day. There's an old home or garage or something that's there. Where on the map is that? Because it's dilapidated and grown over. Oh, I'm sorry. Question answered. Thanks. And the intention is obviously to get rid of that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have questions for the petitioner?
So just to go over the procedure, what happens is that we ask that this particular commission act upon this subdivision. If it's favorably approved, we still have to go back to court, and Attorney Sullivan and I would go to the judge and ask for the judge's approval of this entire settlement agreement, as well as your acceptance of this proposal. What I wanted to tell you is that if this proposal is accepted, there currently now is an approval on 795 James Farm Road for a 116-unit apartment building, and that would be withdrawn, and that would not be built or not be permitted or not allowed on this property as part of that settlement. So that approval that's there now would be eliminated, I guess is the right word, and this proposal would be put in its place. I hope that's clear. So what I would ask this commission to do is to ask us any questions you have. If it's approved, your counsel and counsel and I will come back next month for Peters Lane, and then we'll go to court to get the whole thing, because I've been to all other commissions already, and I think I have one more. And I have one tomorrow. I mean, you know, so once we have all those approvals, then we go to court. But I thought this was a straightforward one, and we broke it down, you know, James Farm, and next month we'll do Peters Lane. So any questions on this?
Thank you. Well, again, we're just going to focus on tonight's agenda, right?
That's it.
So, thanks. So just a quick question. How many trees do you guys actually intend on removing?
Oh, I don't know if I have a specific answer. Obviously, where the homes are going to be.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously.
Just going along with that, obviously, all of that would have to be consulted with the tree warden before any tree removal.
Yes. Yeah. Likewise. Good point, Commissioner. Same with the septics. You have to get the health department's approval before you can put those septics in, you know. So I understand those conditions.
Yeah. Okay. I think the approval for the septic was granted, what, 2019?
It was the sanitarium.
Okay.
Yeah.
They had capacity.
Okay.
We would have to come back, yeah.
Got it. Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Mr. Boyd?
Yes, William Boyd, District 2. Is that the Town Attorney?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Can we hear from the Town Attorney's standpoint on the legislation that you said 795, with these houses being approved, will supersede the apartments that was there? Can you speak to that?
I can.
Okay.
So, Pat Sullivan from the Town Attorney's Office. That property right now is under litigation. The zoning commission did not approve those apartments, but it went to court, and the trial court filed a decision that was favorable to Mr. Bellis. We've appealed that now to the appellate court. So it's now in the appellate court, but Attorney Bellis is correct that if this is approved and the global settlement all comes together, then there will not be the risk that the 116 apartments end up on 795 James Farm Road. That's part of the global settlement.
Okay, so there's a pending appellate court case on the apartments?
Correct.
So if that's pending, how is it then already approved if that's pending?
Well, Attorney Bellis indicated that it was approved. It wasn't approved by the zoning commission, and as I said, the trial court judge wrote a decision that was more favorable to Mr. Bellis, but I would not characterize the 116 units as approved, but there's still the risk that they would be approved, and this would eliminate that risk. So that's one of the reasons to settle the litigation, is that the apartments would not go in, and that application would be withdrawn. So, which basically is... I mean, there's a lot of logistics involved in, does the appellate court settle it? Does it go back to the trial court? But those are all logistics that we can handle once we know that 795 James Farms Road, which is tonight's, 500 Peters Lane, which is next month, and then there's a separate case on Orin Oak Lane, which the planning commission doesn't have an interest in, but which is also moving along. So we need to have all those pieces together before we go back to court and get everything resolved. But what we're here for tonight is to say, does the planning commission, in an administrative way, look at this subdivision and say, on this property, these three lots, plus the remaining excess going to the town, does that meet with your regulations?
Okay. I hear what you're saying. Based on what the attorney said, it sounded more like a foregone conclusion. I didn't know it was still somewhat pending. However, if we approve it, then I believe what you're saying is that appellate court case will kind of go away. I didn't get that kind of sense when the attorney was speaking. I didn't understand there was something pending.
If you look at the entire settlement agreement, there are three cases pending. I'm just talking about the land use cases now, because there's other cases. There's tax cases. There's some other cases that are not involved in the land use area, but it's a little bit of a house of cards right now. So each one of the pieces has to come together in order for them all to be resolved. So the simple part for this is approval of this so that that puzzle piece can be put in.
Okay. My last statement or question is, I guess if we approve this, will there... Can they counter the pending apartments, whoever that is that's suing for that? Can they then come back and challenge it again? Or is it...
He's the one who's suing for that. So that's his project as well. So he has control over that.
Yeah. Let me... I'll answer your question. I wasn't trying to be evasive, Mr. Boyd. I didn't want to get too technical. So Attorney Sullivan's right. The zoning commission denied the 116 units. We appealed that to the Superior Court, and the Superior Court overturned your zoning commission and allowed the 116 units. So we have a trial court decision that says that that is now zoned for 116 units. The town took an appeal to the appellate court. Now they have the burden of trying to reverse that trial court decision. But that's going to stop dead in its tracks, both that appellate court case, if this gets... If you approve this project and the settlement goes through, we are withdrawing that entire application of 116 units as part of the global settlement. So no one could ever come back. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted... I appreciate you asking. You want to be clear that that's not going to come boomerang back.
So what I understand is you're representing the apartments in these houses?
Yeah, I represent the landowner. Yeah.
You represent the landowner. What do they want to do?
They want you to approve this.
They want the three houses?
Yes. Yes, sir. And I have a... You know, I know I'm the opposing attorney, but Attorney Kevin Kelly will support what I say. He was the one who negotiated the deal for the city of Shel... I'm sorry. For the city of Stratford.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any...
Yeah, I'll answer any other questions.
Are there any other questions for the petitioner?
Thanks. Kevin, you want to... This is Attorney Kevin Kelly. He's from your town. Thanks.
Sure. For the record, Attorney Kevin Kelly, representing the town of Stratford. I represented the mayor's office, working with Mr. Bellis, in negotiating the global settlement that actually resolves 11 pieces of litigation between the town and the developer. On this site, there was a prior affordable housing development for 72 units, which went... The zoning commission denied, went to the Superior Court, and was upheld. The applicant came back with 116 units. The zoning commission, again, denied. However, on appeal the second time, the Superior Court overturned the zoning commission, and as a result, the town zoning commission appealed to the appellate court where the case now sits. In order to resolve not only this, but the 11 other pieces of litigation, this was one of the issues, was that the town wanted to take its environmental stewardship very seriously. So while there is a subdivision for three single-family homes, there's also a deed to the town for open space for the other 12-plus acres that would be adjacent to the Roosevelt Forest, which is a big win for the town of Stratford and the environment. So as part of this global settlement, the developer would get three single-family home lots, and the town would get the 12-plus acres for open space in addition to its municipal forest, which is one of the few in the state of Connecticut. So the town supports this application as presented and the settlement more globally.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Attorney Kelly?
I guess my concern is, William Boyd's Zone 2, is there's no affordable housing. That didn't get... There is no counter. We win there as a town, we got open space, but there is no counter... Okay, where else would you build that? So there's no other plan to replace that particular project of that size in town that I know of.
Well, I believe under the settlement agreement, there was, and Attorney Bellis can correct me if I'm wrong, but on 520 Success Avenue, there was a conversation, and... Not a conversation. There's an identification of an affordable housing complex under 8-30G, where all the affordable housing units would be allocated, because this is a parcel that straddles the Stratford-Bridgeport line, would be dedicated to the town of Stratford. So that was one of the considerations that came into the settlement agreement.
Okay, that's good information. Thank you.
Sure.
Does anybody have any questions regarding 795? Thank you so much. I will now ask members of the public to comment in favor or opposition to the petition. I will also allow general comments and observations from those who are neither in favor or in opposition to the petition. Each member of the public will be provided three minutes to make their arguments. If someone wishes to speak again, you will be given a chance after everyone who signed up gets their chance to speak first. Is there anyone... Oh, we'll go with the list. This is... We have a short list here. In opposition, is Joe Gresko still here? No. Marka Lee?
You actually got it right. Marka. So it's Marka Lee, 1661 Elm Street in Stratford. I'm late to the party when it comes to the controversy over James Farm Road and now Peters Lane, apparently. This started before my involvement and my concern for open space and nature in Stratford. So I get why some people here feel like they've come to a really good compromise by downsizing this development, that it was initially much larger with apartments, et cetera. But I feel like it's being thankful for not cutting off my whole hand just a few fingers. That's how it feels like to me. I'm glad some acreage is being donated to Roosevelt Forest. It's great. I hope it's in writing. But it's still a huge loss for the wildlife that will be torn up, for the trees that will inevitably be chopped down. will inevitably be chopped down. I guess you're chopping down mature trees and then planting young trees, I don't, whatever. But it's a huge loss for that area in environmental beauty, in carbon sequestration, and in biodiversity, which is shrinking every day as we know. And it sets a dangerous precedent, because as far as I'm wrong, as far as I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's no formal protection for Roosevelt Forest, I'm not sure about that, but that's what I've been told. And right now, it seems preposterous that any of the forest could be diminished by any more of this, but who knows who's going to be in leadership in five to 10 years? How do we know that residents, how do we as residents know that this chipping away at the last little clump of trees and nature in our already very densely populated town won't be chipped away at? I understand letters have also been written in by residents, it's very close to the holidays, and a lot of people couldn't make it. I urge the council, the town, and all of you, to apply for a grant for land protection. I know there's been talk of open space grants recently, but Roosevelt Forest, parts of Remington Woods, wetlands, woods, all around town, including the parcel behind 99 Holly Lane, Broadridge Avenue, all these places need solid conservation status. This way, no more selling off of our land could happen in the future, and it could even include purchasing private property that is next to these areas, similar to what's happening tonight, except with official protection, so that any future building proposals on these natural land areas can just be rebuffed, otherwise, this fight's going to be endless. I had a conversation, if I still have time, with a Milford resident, he couldn't be here because he's not a resident, but he visits Roosevelt Forest often. He said he found a painted turtle just as he got here, right in the front of his parking space. All of the eggs hatched and were released at the exact same spot in August. Roosevelt Forest is the only place he's ever seen a wild black racer snake, which was very cool, and it's the only time he's ever seen a milk snake in the wild. These things really matter. And I know we need housing, but it would be awesome if we could start utilizing and looking for existing structures. I know there's a building up here being repurposed for apartments, I think no one would have a problem with that. But the natural spaces here, they're just, it's like death of a thousand cuts, you've got to stop, got to stop and put it to official conservation status. We need a land trust, please, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. We're now calling up Tyler Bunk, Bunch?
Wow, no one ever gets that name wrong. Tyler Bunch.
There was a G scribbled on it.
It's her handwriting, I blame her. Tyler Bunch, 1661 Elm Street. This is not necessarily an against or a for, it's more of a request for mindfulness. Fantastic in my mind that fewer humanity will be infiltrating this particular area. It's fantastic that 12.6 acres are going to be earmarked, deeded to the town. It would also be even more fantastic if some sort of rules could go into place to make sure that land is never developed. I started coming here to Stratford in 96, moved here in 2000. I still remember seeing in the warm weather months, all the bugs in the headlights, and having to clean bugs off my windshield. Do you remember the last time you had to do that? I don't know how long any of you have lived here, do you remember the last time you had to clean bugs off your windshield? It's an indicator of sickness. It is a cycle of a system that is degrading and dying. And every time we cut into it, it's surgery that has to be healed. Every time we move things, all the things that figured out how to live in harmony are in disharmony and have to relearn how to do it. You're going to cut into this land, you're going to cut trees down, there's territory there that's been fought over, there's critters that have figured out a place to live, they're going to have to figure out something new, there will be new wars, there will be more things that die from having to fight over the new lands that they're negotiating than the ones that you're actually going to kill by ripping up the trees. The mowers, the pesticides that are probably going to be used, the lights, they're going to be in people's driveways, they're going to confuse the nocturnal animals, it's all going to go kind of haywire, for a very long time. If you have lived here a while, maybe your grandmas, your moms had pretty good tomato harvests, or cucumbers, or whatever it was, and I guarantee you, you don't have the same harvest you used to, because the whole system's being fucked with all the time. We are screwing with our neighbors, every time we do something like this. As little impact as possible that can be made in the natural world means we get to eat better, we get to breathe better, we get to live, we should be doing less of this. I'm glad it's less now, let's protect what's still there and still living, whatever paperwork that takes. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Our town planner has a few letters that were written in opposition, she's going to read them out for you?
So I received these by email, and they're all in a position of the petition. The first one is Barbara Halstrom, from 24 Pollard Street, Deb Ralsford, from 201 Bridgeview Place, Devon Berizza, she did not provide her address, Don Feliciano, 1080 Beaver Dam Road, Heidi Berger, no address, Chiron Samerati, 622 California Street, Marka Lay, who spoke just now, and Thomas C M, 746 Broad Street. And I have provided copies of all those emails into your record, except for Thomas C M's email that I received late this evening, which I will include into the record as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has not spoke that wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Seeing none. Is there anyone who would like to speak neither in favor nor in opposition, but wishes to provide comments on the subject petition? Please. Again, if you don't mind, state your name and your address, please.
Sure, my name is Danielle Rumkounas, I live at 145 Dawn Drive.
Don't break it, nope, you're good.
Okay. I'm speaking neither in opposition or support, I just am concerned, my husband and I have lived at our home for 22 years, and we've seen these particular developers come with various plans over the years. They change as frequently as the weather, and I don't understand completely if the approval of this one development plan is enough to assuage them? Is it just one part of a process? Do all of the parts of that global settlement need to be approved for them to withdraw the application for the 116-unit affordable housing complex? I'm just afraid that if we give them an inch, they'll come back for a foot. It's just, it's just been a nightmare. I previously shared with the planning commission, when my husband and I first moved into our home, we were harassed by these developers. They came to our home and basically told us that they would be, they would be driving down our driveway into property behind our own. And we at the time had small children, and we were frightened. So I'm just very concerned and apprehensive, I would love a guarantee. I'm happy with a three-home subdivision, I think it's appropriate for the neighborhood, but I'm just concerned that it won't be the end. And I just want to, I want to know that there's an assurance in there, that if we approve it, that is all that will ever be built. Because I agree with Marka, development of any kind is a tragic loss. But I'm almost willing to say, okay, we'll take three houses if it means that's it, that's it. And can we get that assurance, that guarantee from these developers before we give them the approval that they seek? Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Is there anybody that hasn't spoke that'd like to make a comment?
My name is Fran Andrade, I live at 17 Kathleen Drive, which abuts the Roosevelt Forest. I guess, I can't say either way if I'm against this or for it, but only, I find it odd that the timing of this is playing out when it is, because I know I've been, I've been at my home since 98, and I've heard about repeated attempts to try to develop the land, and redevelop the land, and find different options and things, but I'm unsettled by the fact that, as she just said, we don't know if this is it, or if this is just one step towards something different. So it feels a little bit unsettling in that way, and I don't know if this means a different access needs to be granted to that property. I didn't really see the map, so I don't have a sense for it, but the way I understand it, it's currently just an access off of James Farm Road. But does this mean at some point, the side road by her property is going to be explored and making it a pass-through? And it just, it feels, it feels like it's part of a bigger plan that we don't know of, and that part of it's unsettling. And I, you know, I actively use Roosevelt Forest, I appreciate that there's 250 acres out my door that is just gorgeous, and I know it's going to impact migration. We have deer, we have all sorts of animals that cut through. You can't cut a swath of property out, drop in some houses and not expect it to not somehow impact migration and what's going to happen, not just, you know, the mammals, but the birds as well. There's a lot going on, and I'm not sure that we truly understand the environmental impact of doing that. We can imagine it changes things, but I don't know that we truly understand it. And so the environmental impact of all this, I imagine it's been studied, but I don't know how deep these studies went, because the studies are typically commissioned by the people who want to use the property, so it'll always come out favorable for them, but I don't know if there's been one commissioned by the town government itself that kind of bumps up against that. I just, I feel like there's a lot that's misunderstood and not understood at this point, and I'm hopeful that whatever decision's made will frame a lot more of that in, and give us some assurance that we're not going to be stepping into something that's leading us down a path where all of a sudden, more properties fall into the same situation. I like the idea that 12 acres come back to the town, but if three acres are going away, and that's going to really upset things wildlife-wise, I don't know that that's a fair trade-off. So I appreciate your time and your consideration, and I hope there's some, there's some path that will assure us and our neighbors that it's not part of something bigger and, you know, and more elaborate than we understand, because I wasn't aware of the deal with the town. I know it sounds favorable from a very high level, but I don't know if it's a small step in the wrong direction. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? Seeing none. So I'll now conclude the public hearing portion of this meeting. The petition is now tabled for further discussion among the commissioners as a part of this month's administrative agenda. I need a motion from one of the commissioners to table? Table this item, yeah?
Okay. Paul O'Reilly, I'll make a motion to table the item.
Sarah Graham, I second that.
All in favor? Any opposed? So moved. With that, we move to the next order of business on the agenda, which is the administrative session. May I have a motion to open the administrative session and the balance of the planning commission agenda?
Paul O'Reilly, I'll make a motion to open the administrative session.
Sarah Graham, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm now looking for a motion to take the petition regarding JRB Holding Co., located at 795 James Farm Road subdivision off the table, and open this agenda item for discussion.
Paul O'Reilly, I will make that motion, take the petition off the table for discussion.
Sarah Graham, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time, I'm going to ask the town planner to give us your overview, please.
So, as you are aware, subdivision reviews are purely subject to an administrative review by the planning commission, as long as the proposal meets the zone standards, and is not impacting public health, safety, and welfare, then I think it is a purely straightforward review that you're going to do. In this case, as you can see in my staff report that I provided to you, these parcels are part of RS1 residential single-family district, and the lot standards that are proposed are compliant with the RS1 zone standards. And they're also compliant with the town subdivision regulations. We did reach out to other town staff for the comments. The town engineer offered the following feedback in his email dated December 2nd, 2022. He said, remove dens under brush from planting strip to provide better site for proposed driveways. Several of the lush pine trees, or all of them, would be removed for driveways and landscape. This is recommended due to the size and proximity to power lines. The proposed trees are not within the new street line, so would be private trees as opposed to public trees. Also, the subdivision shows a monument symbol where monuments would be installed at all changes in the street line alignment. Note 2 on the map says the proposed monumentations are not set, a call-out for these monuments to be installed should be added on the drawings. After receiving these comments on trees, I forwarded those to the conservation superintendent, who offered the following feedback in her email dated December 2nd, 2022. Any trees proposed for removal within the town right-of-way are subject to review and approval by the tree warden. No trees may be pruned or removed without permits. A tree planting detail should be included on the detail sheets to ensure that the contractor installs the trees properly, regardless of them being private or not. Application materials were also shared with the fire chief, police chief, building official, but received no comments. In terms of consistency with the plan of conservation and development, the subject property has been recommended for residential open space use in the future land use discussion of the town plan of conservation and development. And this use allows predominantly large residential lots and residential developments with ample open space components. The land use features one dwelling unit per acre with the recommendation that some parcels could be acquired for forest preserve. As you can see, the proposal, in which the lots are ranging from 40,000 square feet onwards to 550,775 square feet, which is the biggest parcel which will be dedicated as open space, they all are compliant with the P O C D recommendations, the zoning standards, and the subdivision regulations. We also have another piece of this application for review as an administrative review, which is the soil erosion and sediment control component of the application. You will have to vote it as an administrative review only, it is not subject to public hearing, but we advise as staff that standard conditions should be placed for the proper, you know, siltation and erosion controls that should be installed when this construction will happen, for those three single-family lots. So I have four conditions here in my staff report that I think should be included if you were to approve this proposal. Also, keeping in mind that the town engineer and the conservation superintendent's comments should also be carefully considered. So those four conditions are that all necessary siltation and erosion controls shall be in place, and the zoning enforcement officer be notified for an inspection prior to any site construction work being performed. Immediate onsite modifications shall be employed when an erosion problem develops. In evaluating this application, the commission has relied on information provided by the applicant, and if such information subsequently proves to be inaccurate or incomplete, this approval may be modified, suspended, or rescinded. The applicant should submit a more detailed plan for fugitive dust control to be provided to the zoning enforcement officer prior to building demolition activities, if any. In this case, you know, there is no building demolition.
Thank you. This time, from the commissioner's perspective, this is the discussion part where we can discuss, or if you have any questions for either the petitioner, we have several attorneys in the room, the town planner, this is the opportunity. My, I'll start with the question, if you're room, the town planner, this is the opportunity. My, I'll start with the question if you don't mind. This could be for the town planner or Attorney Pat Sullivan. When it says that, or Attorney Kelly, when it says that the twelve-point-six acres is going to be deeded to the town of Stratford, there was concerns from some of the folks that were talking about what's that actually mean when it's deeded as open space. Can you just give me some clarity, or give the group clarity on what that deeded and deeded for open space is?
My understanding is that it would be connected to Roosevelt Forest, and so it would be protected in the same way that Roosevelt Forest is protected.
That was my understanding too. I just wanted to get confirmation.
Stand on the word protected, since we're on that topic. Well... Or what does it mean? That the... I don't know the original approval for Roosevelt Forest, so this would be the same. I don't know, Kevin, if you know, but, you know, I heard some questions about, well, could it ever be developed? And I can't really give you an answer to that question because I don't know what the whole, you know, what the protection is for the whole forest, but this property would be protected in that same way.
So the question is, is it landlocked? That would be the...
Well, not physically landlocked, but what I'm saying is that there are some protections that would include it could never be developed. There are some protections that would say there's a conservation easement over it, and part of it depends on how it was originally created. And so what I'm saying is that this property would be protected in the same way that Roosevelt Forest is, but I can't tell you exactly what that means in terms of future development of that property.
So if I may add, any dedication to the town will go back to the council again as a municipal improvement, a dash twenty-four review, and it has to come before the planning commission, once again, for the commission to accept such dedication. So my understanding is that the deed would place an emphasis on keeping that as open space in perpetuity, and the commission would have an opportunity to comment and place any conditions at that time if the deed were to be brought before the council and dedicated to the town. I mean, that is the general process. I would like you to, you know, know from the attorneys here if that is the standard process that will be followed as part of the settlement agreement or not.
Thank you. Just correct me if I'm wrong, and I know you guys all have questions. Just to summarize it, it'll be deeded to the town of Stratford, protected as open space. So there's no other intentions for it. It's meant to be set aside as open space protected for the town of Stratford.
That's correct. I don't think Attorney Viller should speak because we're in session now.
I was just going to point out that your statute would open space means you can't develop it.
So, if we call on you, we'll call on you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Are there any questions? Again, you can call on the petitioner or any of the attorneys, town planner. Does anybody have any further questions that need clarity?
William Boyd, District Two. If I read with the town planner Sussamtha just read extensively, so the town is in a favorable with the project, it meets the P O C D, it meets all of our guidelines to then approve a project like this. There's nothing that we feel juxtaposed about in approving this. Did I read that right?
And that's correct, and that's, they've used the word administrative several times because it's more of an administrative hearing because we're focused on, I know there's a lot of other properties been talked about, seven ninety-five, that's what we're focused on.
Right. So based on what she read, that was based on seven ninety-five?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
With that being said, is there any other questions? At this point, we're going to be looking for a motion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the subdivision at seven ninety-five James Farm Road as it aligns with the P O C D and town zoning regulations. Additionally, I'd like to include that it's contingent upon meeting all of the requirements laid out by the, by the town engineer, by the conservation superintendent, and by the planning department as listed in their memo to us.
Second.
Excuse me, I think we need to do a motion to vote on it to see if we approve. We don't do a motion to approve, do we?
No, we were at the point where we were looking for a motion on this.
Okay, to take a vote, I thought.
And now we're looking for a second of Mr. Aurelia's motion.
Commissioner Vacolo, I second that.
Now we're going to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So moved.
Thank you all, and I'll see you next month.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Okay. I know all of you commissioners have other lives, so let's continue through the agenda and keep it moving, please. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from November of twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. During our, the administrative talk about this seven ninety-five... Excuse me, excuse me. We're just going to settle up with our, continue with the agenda, please. Thank you. We just approved the minutes, so now we had Section Six, which was the Erosion and Sediment Control Plan. However, we have already voted to unanimously voted to include Sussamtha's, the town planner's guidelines for all of that sediment control plan, so. All right. Even with that being said, we're still going to have to vote on this again. So we're looking for a motion on the seven ninety-five James Farm Road Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan Review.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make the motion that we approve the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan Review.
You're going to have to include also the, the conditions laid out by the town planner. Can you do it over again, Mr. Aurelia?
Yes, with those conditions included, from the, from the town planner.
Start from the top, if you don't mind.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the seven ninety-five James Farm Road Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan Review, along with the recommendations from the town planner in regards to that.
Looking for a second?
Sarah Graham, I second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. The balance of the administrative session is going to be discussion. There's really no voting left. So, next item on the agenda, Item A, Implementation Plans for the Greenway and Complete Streets. Is there any updates, Ms. Tata?
Yes. So, we received a response from DOT on our submittal for Project Authorization Letter to Proceed with Bidding. They had additional comments, and the consultants are right now addressing those comments. And then we also had one meeting on the Complete Streets Phase Two, which is from Barnum Avenue to Perez Green. It was a planning meeting that was attended by my colleague Jay Hibansky. I was not in the office that day, but it was a previously scheduled meeting, and folks were coming from Glastonbury, so they just proceeded without me. The result of that meeting was that a field investigation will be conducted sometime in January to just look at the conditions of the proposed Greenway, and they will be soon starting a public engagement process for Phase Two Complete Streets and Greenway planning. Not Greenway, but just Phase Two Complete Streets, I'm sorry.
That's great. Sounds like some good progress. Ms. Graham, anything to add? Next item on the agenda, nine, is Plan of Conservation and Development, and any updates? I know we have the next P O C D Technical Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday, January twelfth. Again, commissioners are, you know, you're invited to come and listen. We'll make sure you're included on that, but it's, you know, for the sake of, you know, it'll be Zoom, but just to attend, you don't have to, this isn't a participation one. This would just be to follow along. Sussamtha, do you have anything else?
Sure. As you might have seen in your package that you received this month, we've had several meetings with members of boards and commissions in the town. We've had a meeting with the Housing Partnership, which was reinvigorated, and now reinvestigating the recommendations that were provided for housing in the housing plan that was adopted a year, two years ago, I think, or a year ago. And then we also met with the Parks and Recreation Committee. We met with the Public Works Stratford High School Renovation Committee, Building Needs Committee members. Then we met with, you know, Greater Bridgeport Transit Authority and the Town's Traffic Authority, and we met with Waterfront Harbor Management Commission, Houssetonic Estuary Commission, and Conservation Commission members. There was only one or two members attending from these commissions, but they actually got the gist of this, and they were going to go back and report to their own commissions at their regular meetings and bring more feedback, either through writing or by an additional meeting in January. We also met with Economic Development Commission and RDA, Historic District Commission, Architectural Review Board, Arts Commission, and Health Department, and then I think that's it for now. Roosevelt Forest Commission, if I had not mentioned that. We have one more, we conducted one more meeting this afternoon with the Waste Water Treatment Authority, which is Water Pollution Control Authority, and then we are going to have one tomorrow with only the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission members. And then we have one last one left, which we are going to do in January with the Housing Partnership Commission on Aging, Partnership for Youth and Families, and Housing Authority. I did go to the Commission on Aging meeting, and I gave them an update as well and took in some of their recommendations, but this will be a combined meeting where they would interact with each other. But most importantly for this group, we are going to have an in-person workshop on January twenty-third in the evening at Baldwin Center. I request each of you to be present because we are going to identify housing choices that are needed in the town and the priorities for the next decade. So the consultant is going to come up with something more fun and interactive, like a visual preference exercise, where you can actually do identification of what kind of homes you want where in the town. We also invited members of the Zoning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Architectural Review Board. So I think it'll be nice to interact with your fellow commission members to see how, you know, what you as a planning commission advise shapes into implementation at the zoning commission or, you know, at the architectural review board, what kind of design standards would be more, you know, suitable to a town like Stratford. So I think it'll be a very interesting and very important workshop for the P O C D. It was seven to eight-thirty, Baldwin Center, and it's only for the members of boards and commissions, not for the general public.
You sent out an email, but, I mean, if you do have a conflicting thing on your schedule, let us know, like, very soon so that, because it's important to get all of us there, meeting with the Acting Zoning Commission and the Z P A. It's probably going to be the very important meeting, just to get everybody's input. So let Sussamtha know if you can't make that date, please.
Yeah, I just want to add that I have been on Stratford Planning Commission for four years since I started working here. Oftentimes, I've seen planning commission members being frustrated on some decisions being made and, you know, not translated into a zoning regulation, or, and I think this is your opportunity to interact with them and let them know. What is your vision for town planning in Stratford?
So on that note, Sussamtha, thank you so much for all of that update and all of the, seems like hundreds of meetings that you have to go to. So you're getting up there in numbers, maybe close to a hundred, so thank you so much for all of your work. We appreciate it, and again, thank you to all the commissioner members that you guys have been, all the stuff you've worked with and been involved with and being a part of it. It's very important, and I think it'll pay dividends because of all the time we've put into it. It's official. It's been one year that we all worked together, so I wanted to thank everybody for that. It's been, this is a year. It's a full year, and you guys are a great group to work with, and I appreciate it, and it's been a joy. So look forward to seeing what next year brings to us. Hope you guys all have a happy and healthy, safe holiday, and enjoy it. And we'll, you get a couple weeks off, and then we'll see you in January, because I think we have a full docket based on what we heard during this meeting. Does anybody else have anything they want to add before we close tonight?
No, just a motion to adjourn.
There you go. Second, all in favor?